Cool in the summer and warm, just warm in the winter, not steamy. No.
You know that they changed the township board meeting.
Doesn't.
Township board meeting was shifted from the 8th to the 15th.
She's got ice water. Fill the table.
Yep. The meeting on the 15th and the 29th then. Because there's an election on the 8th. Last year. Yeah, I mean, last year they held it downstairs.
Good evening. Hi. I'd like to welcome you all to the January 20th Northfield Township Planning Commission, and I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ.
Okay, please call the roll, Mr. Stanulacho.
Mr. Dignan.
Present.
Ms. Chick.
Here.
Ms. Chockley.
Here.
Stanulacho's here. Mr. Iaquinto.
Here.
Mr. Kuzno.
Here.
Mr. Roman.
Here.
Okay, great. We have a quorum and we have a member of the public, Mr. Jim Nelson, our planner, Leah DuMichelle, our staff person, Mary Byrd, and our recording secretary, Lisa Lemble. Welcome, everyone. Let's see, you have the agenda in front of you, and did you wanted to add something, Ms. Chick, to the agenda?
Under unfinished business, I wanted to just go for change to the bylaws.
Okay, we'll add that to unfinished business if there's no objection. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Support.
Okay, motion by Mr. Kuzno, support by Mr. Iaquinto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that passes. Okay. Now's our opportunity for a call to the public. Come on up to the microphone if you have something to say, three minutes, your name and your address, and I'll let you know when time's up. Welcome.
Hello, David Gordon, Helena Road. Just for the record, I think it must be about ninety degrees in here. I can't imagine what it's costing to heat this place to that temperature. I would even recommend that you postpone the meeting due to inclement weather. I sent an email to several members of the planning commission. I think that with two lame duck commissioners and a planner who is leaving us and without a new planner, it might be prudent to postpone election of planning commission officers because it's possible that within a week or two, we'll have new members on the planning commission who might be better at the roles, secretary, whatever gets voted on. And I also am curious why we're still working on the bylaws when again we don't have our new planner in place. So I would, I would think that we'd want to have a better sitting body, more reflective of the board than what's here right now. Just a recommendation on my part, I think it's kind of inappropriate to move forward on these things without having all the new members in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have correspondence. Does anyone have any correspondence they would like to share with the rest of the commission? No? Okay.
We did receive correspondence. Are you going to share that with the commission?
Did I?
All of us did.
From?
Prior to the revised packet coming out. We all received a request, an email request that came in on January 14th from Living Water Community Church.
To us?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we did.
Sorry, a long, some time ago, I was... And what are we supposed to do with that at this point? Oh, we're just...
Well, it's a request of us to do something.
It's not on our agenda yet, though.
I know, I guess my question is, is why is it not on the agenda? It was a correspondence that came out prior to the packet being released.
Okay.
Why isn't it on the agenda?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Dignan, I...
Can we add it?
Yeah, we can add it.
Yeah, okay. I don't have it front, in front of me.
I mean, it's under a new business item.
That's fine. That's fine.
I'd like to make a motion to add correspondence from Living Water Community Church to new business.
Okay. Oh, to new business? Okay. I'm sorry, I must have been not aware that it was intended to be put on new business.
Excuse me.
Mr. Gordon, you are out of order. Please sit down. Mr. Gordon, you are out of order. Please sit down. Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Dignan. Mr. Dignan, I'm the chair. Thank you. Mr. Gordon, you're out of order. That's correct.
I thought I could add something because I didn't use my three minutes.
No, you cannot.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon. Okay. Correspondence. Okay, so we have a correspondence from Living Water. I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not aware of exactly what they were asking us to do. Oops.
Is there a support? I didn't hear.
So, okay, so this is...
We, we have a motion. We didn't vote.
Right, we haven't voted on it yet. I'm trying to figure out.
My motion's just for discussion.
Okay.
Under new business.
To put it under new business, just for discussion.
Just for discussion?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Dignan and a support by Mr. Stanulacho to put this request from Living Waters Church under new business.
And it was distributed to us on the 14th.
Okay. That's if we all received it.
Well, you all were on the email.
Well, I was, okay, you're correct. I was delayed, though, on this email, so anyway. Okay, so, Mr. Roman.
Discussion on the motion.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Roman.
I did receive it and I did read it, and in the language of the letter, it appeared that they're requesting something. But in the text by Mr. Fink that sent it, I believe it was Mr. Fink that sent it, I didn't see that he was requesting it or saying that it should be on the agenda. Either way, I'm not opposed to discussing anything about it, but we had just approved the agenda two steps ago.
Okay.
So, if you're making amendments to the agenda, it's out of order technically. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
We can talk about it under correspondence if the motion fails.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Dignan and support by Mr. Stanulacho. Let's vote on whether we should have this under new business or discuss it, well, under new business. So, call, call the roll, Mr. Stanulacho.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
Can you clarify the motion, please?
The, the motion by Mr. Dignan, we'll go ahead, restate your motion.
My motion was to add the letter under new business for discussion only.
Add to the agenda.
Add to, add under new business, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so go ahead and call.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Ms. Chockley?
Yes.
Stanulacho votes yes. Mr. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
No.
Motion passes, so we will, we'll read the letter at that time.
Yeah.
Okay, out loud. Okay, thank you.
That would be item B. I apologize, I didn't declare that. Yep.
Okay. So we have reports now. Board of trustees report, Ms. Chick.
The Board of Trustees met January 12th. The civic event for Michigan Pond Hockey was approved. The zoning change for the Washtenaw County Preserve was approved. A motion to contract with McKenna and Associates to act as planning commission for first Northfield Township was also approved. And the planning commission appointments were pulled from the agenda by his supervisor. Appointments have been requested to be voted on at the January 26th workshop meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a ZBA report, Mr. Dignan?
There was no meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything from the staff, Ms. Byrd? Okay, could you use a microphone, please? Thank you.
We will have a ZBA coming up in February.
February, okay, thank you. Planning consultant report, Mr. Michelle.
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have no public hearings, unfinished business. Ms. Chick, you have something you'd like to discuss.
I do. Excuse me, one second, let me pull it up. We had unusual sort of set of circumstances with the planning commission appointments come up. And due to a delay in the announcement being made and then the appointments being pulled from the agenda. And I think looking forward that we actually need to have something in our bylaws that will address that situation because I think it's kind of presumptuous to assume who, if, if they're new people that are interested or people that are already sitting, being reappointed or new appointments, and I agree that the people that are electing the officials should be the people that are going to be sitting on the planning commission for that term. So having said that, I would like to make a change to the bylaws under section 6.1, under selection. The first meeting after final approval of the new appointments or reappointments by the Board of Trustees shall be considered the planning commission's organizational meeting, at which time the planning commission shall elect, and then...
That sounds like a good amendment to me.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah.
The first meeting after final approval of new appointments or reappointments by the Board of Trustees shall be considered the planning commission's organizational meeting, and then the rest stays the same. Do you want me to read the rest?
Okay. Mr. Dignan?
I, I have an issue with that only because what you're doing is you're stopping government from operating. If the planning commission is not in a position to operate fully, the planning commission is under no jurisdiction to take on any business with that mindset. So if we are in the middle of dealing with a new applicant that just comes in and we have a site plan in front of us, you're saying is delay the site plan until such time, delay everything that, so the planning commission should not meet until such time that new appointees are made. We can't do that because the operation of government must go on. With the absence of individuals or the lack of the executive branch of the township government acting in accordance with what they're supposed to act in, you cannot stop government from functioning. I understand the premise behind it, but if we can't elect officers, then what are we doing, taking and making community changes that actually affect the community when it comes to site plans or conditional uses or anything that we do as a governing body?
Wait, let's, we have another. Mr. Roman?
Are we on staff report on the agenda?
No, actually, we are.
Are we already down to nine?
No, we're down to unfinished business and Ms. Chick has, is talking about a change to the bylaws in section 6.1, so we are discussing that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, we added that, and so we're taking comments on...
I, I thought we were on staff report, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, we are, we are not. Ms. Chick? I don't believe, after reading, I don't think, think it delays anything because the people that are actually still sitting on the commission still hold their seats until new appointments are made. All it is is delaying the organizational meeting. It doesn't change anything.
Right, and the, the two commissioners whose terms have expired continue to serve until their replacements are, are appointed. So, we still have Mr. Iaquinto and Mr. Roman for instance still serving. Mr., I'll have to delay until we have everyone else be able to speak. Mr. Iaquinto?
If the individuals are still serving on their seat that, and we're conducting regular business, to me, you should also go forward with all of the normal business that you would, which is the election of officers, your organizational meeting. Because you're saying one's more important than the other, and I don't think it's right to make that kind of distinction that you should just go on the norm of the township business. Because then someone else could bring up a fact, well, you're delaying that, then you should delay this. So again, we're creating a avenue for distinctions of differences of what items are more important. Especially if we, because Mr. Fink was the one that told me to, and Mr. Roman, to continue because he addressed that with MTA, and I guess there's proper terminology that allows the vacancy not to go empty until the township board does do their appointee and their approval process.
Okay.
True, everybody keeps to see, keep their seat, but nothing would change as far as the officers goes until the new appointees are in, if there are new appointees. I mean, we're making a presumption that there's going to be. We also can't make an assumption that the same people are going to get back on. So, no disrespect to anybody, and I just wanted, yeah, but I think the delay shouldn't have happened and it probably could have been avoided. And then we got a further delay at the last meeting. I mean, you were there. There was people that were expecting, the trustees were expecting to vote and the people in the audience that had sent in letters of intent were expecting to hear something. And I just think there should be a process in place to avoid any questions. And there was also a question that came up, and I did not actually hear the answer to that about, yes, the commissioners can keep their seat, but can they vote? That was presented too. So, I assume they can because they're keeping their seat, but I just think we should have the people that are going to be sitting in place be the people that elect the officials.
Do we have anyone else down here? Mr. Stanulacho?
I, I understand where you're going with it, but to me, it doesn't make any sense. The positions, the positions that we are, vote on for our organizational structure here have really limited authority. Basically, it's limited on, and so I don't see we're waiting till two more people come on, it's going to end up making a change in how it is we're going to function. I just don't see the point in, in actually putting forward a delay like that. If we're going to end up setting a date that we said already that, and it's been in our bylaws that it's the first, or it's a meeting in January when we elect this, the officers, and then we keep putting on contingencies on that so that it may end up being pushed or manipulated so that we can actually just keep pushing it down the line and never get to that organizational meeting. I, I just think that it's just a delay, and I don't see the point.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to that? Mr. Roman? Oh, Mr. Kuzno?
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with waiting. We're talking about positions that could be filled by the new people that take on those, you know, those seats as it is. And you're dealing with a situation where you're going to have, you know, let's, let's assume eleven months, or at least, well, I don't know, I don't know the next, the next round of appointments are. Is there someone off the...
Next year. Next December.
So eleven months or so that you'd be operating with the new folks on board. I think that they should have a say in, in who those officers would be. In fact, they might even want to be in those positions, who knows? I mean, I just...
Right, right. Okay. Do we have any, any more? Mr. Roman, do you have a comment?
Well, I have a question, Ms. Chick.
Sure.
What was the reason that was delayed?
No reason was given. Supervisor said she was not ready.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Dignan?
Well, a couple of things. It's a slippery slope that you're going down because then it could be, well, there might not be a trustee of the board present, and we need a full, full, full-fledged board in order to vote for who is going to be appointed or not. And then it could be, well, the supervisor's out for a month, so, you know, the supervisor can't put forth a recommendation till they're back, or, you know, you can add all these caveats onto this time and time again. The fact of the matter is, Mr. Stanulacho spoke to it directly. No one on this board has any more authority than anyone else on this board. The only thing officers do is facilitate the meeting. The only thing they do is, is, if, if they're doing things by our bylaws, there's a few extra duties of the secretary, but as far as what they're doing, they don't have any more power, any more authority, or any more action than any other member of the board. I know your recommendation is to add it to the bylaws so that the next year, that's the way we would be governed, but at the same time, you, we're seven equal members. What you're doing is you're making it so that they're not seven equal members. You're taking away the ability of certain members for a period of time, and that doesn't make us seven equal members anymore. You're saying that five of us can do something that the seven of us can't do. And it's voting for officers. That, that is exactly what's happening. So what you do is you have two crippled members on the board that are different than the other five, and I don't know that that's legal. I think that is, could be questioned whether or not that's legal or not. So I think that should have to be, if, if we're going to consider that, I would recommend that it go before the attorney of the township to make sure that that is even legal to do.
Ms. Chick?
We have one clarification. Actually, the supervisor can give that authority to one of the board members to do that. She did that last time. To make the appointment.
Okay. Well, I'd like to mention also that, you know, the appointments will be made according to, I'll take Ms. Finkstrom's word for it, that she said she would make the appointments at the next meeting so that our next meeting, February 3rd, we will have a fully constituted body. And, you know, and it is true that Mr. Iaquinto sits on the Parks and Rec Committee, and if for some reason she sees fit not to reappoint Mr. Iaquinto, then we have an opening there. And, you know, so there could be some shuffling around of the different positions.
Ms. Chockley?
Yes.
We're not talking about tonight's meeting. Our bylaws are clear on how we have to operate right now. This is about next year.
Correct.
Yeah, we have to abide by our bylaws now, so we're talking about next year.
And the same thing could happen next year, so I think it's appropriate to make that adjustment. And I'd like to call the question on Ms...
Can I ask one point of order, please?
Everyone has spoken at least once, so...
We can speak five times if we want to, Ms. Chockley.
Mr. Iaquinto?
My only statement was, is to the fact that I don't believe it would ever be proper for a new individual in the planning commission to take the seat of the chair or even possibly the secretary because they're new to the planning commission. Unless they've been on it and they were on it for a period of time before, so, just, just making that statement.
Thank you. Mr. Stanulacho took this secretary position, although you had been on it a short period of time.
He had been on it for a number of years before, and again, so that's why I clarified that, okay?
Well, but that's, it's really the prerogative of the commission to elect whoever.
Yep.
Ms. Chockley, can I raise a point of order with the public?
With the public?
The public is making outrageous noises, exasperated sounds. I think it's highly inappropriate, and I would request that if it continues, they be removed from the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dignan. Okay, Mr. Roman?
I just have a, a comment from what Mr. Dignan said. I don't, I don't see it as what he described, taking votes away or having two individuals with no, no voting authority, but I just wanted to clarify that, that, from what Ms. Chick said. I, I didn't, didn't understand where he was coming from, basically.
Okay. I don't view it that way myself.
Ms. Chockley?
Okay, Mr., Mr. Michelle?
It's just a clarifying question. I'm wondering what would happen. So if we hold the elections tonight, does that mean that it's unlikely that anyone would vote for Mr. Iaquinto or Mr. Roman for a position knowing that they may not be here, or if for some reason they, I'm just wondering procedurally what happens. If for some reason they're not here at the next meeting and they do have a position or an office, would we have to vote again?
For that office.
Okay.
Wouldn't it make sense just to postpone the elections?
Well, we can't do that.
Right, right now, we're, yeah, right now, we're just dealing with the bylaw change that Ms. Chick suggested. So, I'm prepared to, to call the question on that right now.
Was that a motion made, or...
Right, we, she wants to make a change to the bylaws that we are to consider at our next meeting. So it's not the bylaws that's going to function tonight. It's for our next me...
But there wasn't a motion made.
I can make a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to amend section 6.1 selections to state the first meeting after final approval of new appointments or reappointments by the Board of Trustees shall be considered the planning commission's organizational meeting, at which the planning commission shall elect from its membership a chairperson, vice-chairperson, secretary, and any other officers deemed necessary. All officers are eligible for reelection. The township supervisor shall not serve as chairperson of the planning commission.
Okay, so let's have a vote on that change now. Call, please call the roll, Mr. Stanulacho.
I would like a friendly amendment to make sure that that goes to the township attorney to make sure that it is legal.
No problem.
And so that we don't put this township in any jeopardy.
Sure, okay.
And I'm sorry, who was the support?
The motion by Ms. Chick and support by Mr. Kuzno, okay. And the friendly amendment from Mr. Iaquinto to, we'll check that out with the attorney and make sure that's good. Okay. Mr. Stanulacho?
Well, we have already had a, a notice sent out in the papers that on our next meeting, we're going to end up having our bylaws considered for adoption. Did you already send out all the paperwork? So it means you, you basically sent out all that stuff to us for, and cost the township for nothing.
But the bylaws can be changed at the, at the public hearing as well.
Yes, we can, we can make changes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Roman?
I have a comment regarding that. I had, I, in, in reading the final copy that was received by, by mail, I do have a couple other sections I would like to discuss, or at least point out from, from my notes and conversation of the past six, eight meetings.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so can we have a vote on that section there then, Mr. Stanulacho?
No. Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Ms. Chockley?
Yes.
Stanulacho votes no. Iaquinto?
No.
Kuzno? Roman?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Well, since we're talking about the bylaws, Mr. Roman, you had another section you'd like to take a look at?
I had three, I believe. Uh, yes, I, I had, uh, three, I believe. Um, first one being, uh, page nine of thirteen, top of the page E.
What page again?
Nine of thirteen.
Nine of thirteen. Okay.
Uh, which says, is under, uh, under the section or article, I would believe, seven. Seven, Section 7.3.
Okay.
E. Restating Planning Commission motions made prior to a vote. We, we haven't done that. We don't currently do it. Um, but if we, I don't have an issue with it being there, but if we're gonna do it, we should do it. But, uh, if we put comma, "in absence of an employed recording secretary", it would be more accurate as to how we've been doing it currently and historically. So in other words, comma, "in absence of an employed recording secretary". Most times when we need something read back, Lisa does the read back.
Okay, oh, okay, you just wanna add, "in the absence of the recording secretary" to the, to E.
It's a duty of secretary right now.
Right.
Yes.
And then the next paragraph, uh, is regarding, uh, I'll read it. "In the event of absence of both chairperson and vice-chair, such duties shall, for the time being devolved upon the secretary. In the event of the absence of the secretary, the chair shall appoint a deputy secretary to perform the such duties." And I, I don't think that's ever happened either. But if you put comma, "if necessary" at the end, it would probably make it nice.
Okay. Mr., um, are, are we, are, are you done with that particular section?
That section, yes.
Okay, uh, if, if you would like to make a motion to make those changes to that section, and then we'll continue to-
Do a per-section?
I think that would probably be helpful.
We, we, we didn't do that with most of the amendments, only the ones that didn't seem to have consensus.
Oh.
Previously.
Cause everyone has consensus on this? Okay, it sounds that way to me, too.
Or I could do all of them, and if there's an issue, then we can go separately.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead.
I mean, it's just minor, but it-
It's common sense stuff.
Minor, but it cleans it up and it's not written. But I remember discussing it through, and I looked at my notes.
Can I ask a question on that last one?
Go ahead, Mr. Roman.
Is that okay if I ask a question on that last one?
Certainly.
So, so if the, uh, chairperson, the vice-chairperson, and the secretary are absent, how is the chair gonna appoint a deputy secretary? I just wanted to ask, cause it didn't make sense to me.
I don't know. I, I've never seen it done. That was my point, really, I mean.
Cause, cause obviously, they can't appoint a deputy secretary if they're not there. I think this is if you're gonna have a meeting and only four members can be there. But I think our practice in the past has been-
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, what if the, the chairperson could know they're not gonna be at the meeting and they could appoint a deputy secretary prior to the meeting? Is that possible or not?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm saying, is if they knew the secretary and the vice-chair and the chair aren't gonna be there.
Yeah.
Our practice has always been with, there's only four members, is to typically cancel the meeting. I mean, it's important that we're all here as much as possible, so.
And who would be the chair if none of the officers are there?
You'd have to appoint a temporary deputy secretary.
Okay, well, it's getting complicated.
Should, should that even be in there?
Unnecessarily.
You could still have a meeting with four people, but-
We can.
Yeah, you can, but we don't-
At that point, it's never gonna come down to that, I don't think.
Okay.
Um, and then the, uh, last one I had was page 11 of 13. That would be, s- excuse me, um, Section 8. 8.8. And it's regarding motions. "Motions shall be restated by the secretary, uh, before the vote is taken." I, I suggest, um, after secretary, uh, put in or by the employed recording secretary. So in other words, it'd be motions shall, shall be restated by the secretary or by the employed recording secretary before a vote is taken.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more comments on Mr. Roman's suggestions for change? Oh, okay. Um, I would like to make another change, um, to it also. Now hopefully I can find it amongst all these pages. And, oh shoot. And it has to do with cancellation of the meeting, so.
While you're looking, can I introduce another change?
Sure, go ahead.
So, uh, Section 10.1 under amendments. In respect to, it says, third line down, or repeal shall be submitted by mail. I'd like to recommend the change by email. By mail or email.
Okay.
Either one or.
And that's the, the total change? Okay. Mr. Dignan, you have a comment on that?
Okay, I was just asking whether or not the law stated it must be by mail. That was my only question. I just asked Ms. DuMichelle.
And I said I don't think so, but I'm not 100% sure.
I actually asked our attorney, um, that question when, when Mr. Stanalichow just wanted it emailed, and we thought email was okay. And, um, then I, I didn't know because these particular bylaws say mail. So he said, "No, email does not suffice." Then I sent a follow-up email and I said, "Well, um, can, if we changed our bylaws to say email", I mean, or can we change our, our bylaws to say email? Because there might be some legal ramifications there. And I, he was supposed to get back to me on Monday and apparently got tied up and was unable to do that. So I'm expecting to hear back before we actually go through the whole adoption of this. But that is a, a good thing to, to have brought up, Mr. Iaquinto, and we will get that clarified. Mr. Stanalichow?
I know, under the state statutes, it just says that we have to adopt bylaws. It does not say any specifications about what needs to be in it. So I can't imagine that there's any specificity about that.
Okay, well, we'll find out for sure.
I have no problem with email either, yeah.
I don't, I don't, as long as we're, we get confirmation that everyone has received it. If anything, you know, like my mailbox got full again, okay? Then pretty soon, I couldn't send anything, couldn't receive anything. I didn't know anything was coming in at all. So sometimes that's a problem. ISPs go, you know, go down and, um, or someone spells your email address wrong, like happened to the la- to the last thing with the Living Water Church note coming in. So there was some complication there, and so there-
There's no way to make sure somebody gets something in the mail either. So, I mean, there's, I mean, let's just send it certified mail, and that's, that's not what it says, so it's-
Right. So we'll just find out for sure what the legal ramifications are of that. Okay, um, and I had marked my pages, but I cannot seem to find it, um, about canceling meetings. So if anyone can help me find that section. Page nine. It's the place where the chair is supposed to talk to the, to the secretary about canceling a meeting. And I would like to add vice-chair and secretary, so there's three. Three there, and I can't, I'm sorry, I just can't find in here where that is. But I'm sure you all remember. Oh, here we are. Okay, it's 8.1 on page, well, I have a different version, but 8.1, yep. So I'd like to add, "in consultation with the vice-chair and secretary about canceling a meeting." If everyone's okay with that, um, we'll go ahead and vote on all of these changes that have just brought, been brought up. And that will become our next version of the bylaws. Okay? Mr. Stanalichow, can you call the roll, please?
Is there a motion? For what? What am I calling roll for?
Oh, okay. I move that we, uh, vote on the, this version of the bylaws with all the changes that have just been noted by Mr. Roman. Ms. Chik, you made some too, and I made some, and support and-
And myself.
And Mr. Iaquinto, okay. So, and, so we have a motion by, I guess, me and support by Ms. Chik.
Could you, uh, read that back, Lisa, just to make sure that we know what we're voting on?
Did the bylaw changes suggested by Roman Iaquinto and Chocley be approved?
Those three?
Those three.
And Chik.
Chik. She already had one.
We got her separately, okay?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll, Mr. Stanalichow.
Yes.
Ms. Chik? Ms. Chocley?
Yes.
Stanalichow votes yes. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who was the support?
Ms. Chik? Chik, okay. All right, moving on to new business. Ms. Chik?
I would like to make a motion to maintain the current elected Planning Commission officers' positions as held until after new appointments or reappointments to the Planning Commission are made by the Board of Trustees and subsequent election of officers is held.
Ma'am Chair, I raise a point of order.
Yes, Mr. Dignan?
That motion is in violation of the bylaws in which this board operates and cannot be voted on.
I have to disagree, Mr. Dignan, cause we are ma- we are, um, establishing again for at least one more meeting, this one, um, that we have elected officers and, um, representatives.
The bylaws clearly state exactly this. "At the January meeting of each year, the Planning Commission shall, not may, shall elect from its membership a chairperson, vice-chair, secretary, and any other officers deemed necessary. All officers are eligible for reelection. The township supervisor shall not serve as chairperson of the Planning Commission." So that would be a violation of our bylaws and out of order.
I, I, I'm sorry, I have to disagree. Ms. Chik has made the motion that we are establishing a chair, a vice-chair, a secretary, and our, and our two, uh, representatives for this meeting. And we will revisit that, obviously, at the next meeting. So, um, I know you can disagree, but, um, I'm, I'm ruling that that is not a, a correct version.
Okay, I will ask that that be reviewed by the attorney. And if such time that is found that that is incorrect, that appropriate action be taken.
Okay, at our next meeting, okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Chik and support by-
Second.
Mr. Kuzno. Uh, please call the roll, Mr. Stanalichow.
Mr. Dignan?
No.
Ms. Chik?
Yes.
Ms. Chocley?
Yes.
Stanalichow votes no. Mr. Iaquinto?
No.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
For the evening?
I just made a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Dignan to adjourn. Do we have support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Iaquinto. We have any discussion on this?
It's extremely hot.
Well, it is extremely hot.
Yes, it is.
You are correct.
It's a sauna, and even one of the members of the public made their recommendation in their call to the public.
Okay.
Do we not wanna discuss with, um, our planner, uh, the Lake Overlay zoning district, since she did some work on it and the Living Waters issue?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, um. Does anybody wanna make any more comments on that? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote then.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
Ms. Chik?
No.
Ms. Chocley?
No.
Stanalichow votes yes. Mr. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Ku- Mr. Kuzno?
No.
Mr. Roman?
No.
Okay, so we are, uh, going to continue. Okay, we have a discussion of the Living Water, um-
Ma'am Chair?
Yes, please.
I'd like to ask that the, uh, Planning Commission take into consideration the following information, and that the Planning Commission cast a vote one way or another. Uh, I wanna disclose that myself, I am a member of Living Water Church. I am a lay member. I am not a member of the leadership, and I am not, uh, in, in any way in charge of anything at Living Water. Uh, I have been a member there for a multitude of years and give generously to the church. Due to that, I wanted to make the board aware of that. I do not believe that that in any way will conflict with my ability to make a conscientious decision in regards to their requests. But I ask for that decision to be placed at this board's feet to pass, to vote on whether or not this board can, uh, perceives that as a conflict of interest.
I ditto his statements, cause I am a member of Living Water as well.
Okay. So, um, I guess we can have some discussion of that, you know, being, Ms. Ms. Chik?
I do not have a problem with that.
Okay. No one else?
Our bylaws kinda state if you are financial gain.
Right.
It's the opposite when you're giving, contributing, I think. But we, we def- I definitely wanted to disclose that as well.
Okay.
I appreciate the disclosure. I'm not aware of what the letter says. I don't know what the request is. Let's have a discussion out on the table before we even get to that point.
That's a good idea.
And I doubt that we're gonna be voting any, I'm, I'm-
We're not voting on anything.
Okay, so, so you're ver- very welcome to be part of the discussion, no doubt about it.
Okay, um, Mr. Roman?
I agree with Brad, uh, Mr. Kuzno's statement. Even if it came to a vote, I, I wouldn't see it as an issue.
Okay, that's fine. And I appreciate the disclosure, actually. Uh, thank you very much. And let me read this, uh, letter that we received from, uh, the Living Water Church, so everyone knows what we're talking about. Uh, "To the Northfield Township Planning Commission, subject: Request for change in the general commercial ordinance by the Living Water Church. Living Water intends to purchase 200 Barker Road for use as a ministry center. One condition of our purchase is that Northfield Township approve the use of this property as a church. The property is zoned general commercial. We therefore request the zoning ordinance be changed to permit churches or provide for the conditional use by churches. If the zoning is changed to allow for conditional use, then Living Water requests approval for such use based on the following rationale. This property will provide Living Water with a permanent presence in Whitmore Lake and enable us to expand our ministries to serve Whitmore Lake and the surrounding communities. Living Water has held worship services in the Whitmore Lake High School since 2006. In addition, we have provided a number of programs such as mentoring and tutoring students, mothers of preschoolers, Financial Peace University, Vacation Bible School, et cetera. We have also partnered with Northfield Human Services to provide replenishment for the food pantry, turkeys at Thanksgiving, Christmas gifts for the disadvantaged, et cetera. With a full-time presence in Whitmore Lake, we plan to expand these ministries and also provide prenatal medical services in partnership with St. John's Providence and the 52 Mobile Clinic, a divorce recovery program, an indoor children's play area where mothers can socialize while watching their children, a safe and supervised hangout for youth, et cetera. In addition, we plan to relocate our worship service to the Barker Road facility and make the space available to the community for bridal showers, civic meetings, et cetera. This will require site work to increase the available parking spaces to 62 with a one-way traffic flow entering on the east side of the building and exiting on the west side. See sketch below. I'm glad to answer any questions you may have with regard to this request. Sincerely, Frank Murdock, Elder, Living Water Church." So that is the request. Normally, I believe, uh, an applicant would put in a request for a re- uh, well, this is a change to our zoning ordinance, I guess the request is, and this is a conditional use.
Right, they would have to apply for a conditional use if, if it was allowed in their district.
Right, so they're asking us basically to take a look at our zoning ordinance and see if we believe that churches would be a conditional, an appropriate conditional use in the general commercial area.
Or the village, or the Village Center District.
Oh, yes.
Right, it specifically states that. And to me, I, I can't remember why we stopped at the railroad tracks and did not go to the highway because we excluded, if you look at those parcels, you had Lakeside Sadoi, which is this piece of property. You have Van's Archery, and then you also have, uh, across the street, you have a, I think it's kind of like a repair facility.
M&R.
M&R, and then you have some, you got a home and some other businesses that are behind the home that are right adjacent to the exit off the highway. And, and I can't remember why we stopped it at the railroad tracks and didn't continue it cause looking at- And I can't remember why we stopped it at the railroad tracks and didn't continue it, because looking at this, to me, it makes sense to continue the Village Center District straight to the highway, and so you have one contiguous zoning straight to the highway. As a planning commissioner, that's, I'm looking at it with that analytical eye, instead of having Village Center, and then another zoning, and then another zoning, so.
I think it was just an arbitrary border, because it was there, yeah. It could have been, yeah. So, I have no problem taking a look at this at all, and, you know, at our, we could put it on our, well, as soon as we get another planner, put it on the top of the list for that. Mr. Dignan?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think that, you know, it, it's interesting, obviously, as a member of the church, we've seen this information, you know, which, once, once you see, obviously, more details, it just lends itself to some pretty exciting information. The, the business that is there now is going out, so, it, you know.
Right.
That's all, I mean, it, I, I think it's definitely worth a discussion. My concern was, is, like, as I said, is the disclosure to you guys, and I appreciate the, the feedback on that, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, and, you know, and I'm sorry it wasn't in here listed.
I understand.
I was expecting, well, a request, well, anyway, a request for rezoning or something, or a conditional use request, and that comes a slightly different route, so, thank you for bringing that up again. And, and I would like to stress that when, if there's something missing when you get your agenda packet, let me know, so I can, we can be prepared better. Okay, Mr. Roman?
Well, a comment regarding that, I didn't see it as being an agenda-
It wasn't on the agenda.
Item, but, and maybe in the future it could be clarified as such. But, what stage, I know you can't answer, maybe through you to the planner, planning consultant. Have you been approached by Living, by this, what stage are they at with the administration, I guess?
This is the very first I have heard of it.
Okay. The only other thing, I mean, I had looked at it in a lot more detail probably than I should have, but, the only thing I could also suggest is, like, the, the, the site plan map on the bottom of the page was like ineligible, you couldn't, I couldn't make anything out. I know where the property is, but, you know, and, and that's, obviously, as they go through more steps, it's going to be improved, but.
Yeah, there are no engineering drawings or anything yet, I know that.
No, but the only thing I did see that might, because they have a lot of uses that they're calling out, that they're going to try to utilize, such as assembly, and medical clinic possibly, childcare possibly, and my biggest thing was, like, is the parking lot big enough? So, obviously, it's going to be handled through the consultant and probably our, our building official, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, I'm sure there'll be significant consideration of that, because the conditional use, if granted, does run with the land forever, so, you know, we, we do need to not half-heartedly look at that whole issue. But anyway, I do look forward to seeing, okay? Okay, so next we have minutes, December second and sixteenth. Did anyone have any changes to December second?
I don't think we can legally change that.
You're right, we-
So then we can, we don't even have to approve it. It's automatically approved after our last meeting.
Well, we, we do have a sentence that stops mid, I mean, a sentence that, like, half of a sentence, so, right, on the December sixteenth minutes, and I guess everyone can imagine what that could be and look at the television and figure out what it could be, but.
I mean, you can state what it is, but.
Right, it's at the bottom of page two, right.
I'll leave that.
Yeah, so, anyway, there you go. While we express concern. Okay, well, you all have your, your minutes then, and we will not make any more comments on them. They have been adopted. Okay, policy review and discussion. Ms. DuMichele?
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody has the revised version, Lake Overlay Consideration Two, and it says revised next, but I have some extra copies, just because it, this conversation will not make sense if you're looking at the old one. So, go ahead. Oh, yep, here, pass this one now. One more? No?
Where does it say revised?
Right up on the top, Lake Consideration Two, Revised.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Nope, I've got it right here.
Okay, so, let me first explain a little bit about the revision, which is that, you know, GIS comes in two, they come in layers, the whole system is kind of built on layers, and so, we were running, Marissa and I are GIS technician, we're running these calculations, and we kept coming back one or two parcels different, so not substantially different, but to the point where you're going, you really want to understand where that happened. So it turned out that two of those layers didn't match up perfectly, and once we fixed that, then everything went much more smoothly, so hence the revision, sorry about that. So what I did was just went through, we had three recommendations last time, to minimize the street-side setbacks, firm up the lakeside setbacks, and implement a sliding minimum side setbacks, and then I came back with a pretty good set of comments from my last discussion, and so I just tried to go through and address every one of the comments, and then try to think it through again. So what does the building code have to say about setbacks? It doesn't have anything to say about setbacks. It's all concerned about what's in the building and not building placement. Are there any provisions of the WLD District that could apply successfully to the waterfront properties? Not that will address this issue. In the WLD District, there are no side setbacks. There's an incentive to create some lake view, but that's not quite applicable in a home remodeling scenario that we're talking about. Ken asked if sliding setbacks had been implemented anywhere else, and not that I can find, like, truly, this was a custom solution developed by my boss and I, talking about this particular situation, and in part, we were using methods drawn from form-based coding. It's not a form-based code, but it's a tool, the Synoptic Survey, not rocket science, but that's not something that, that's standard practice. So I did a little Googling, found this article from Longboat Key, Florida, that was considering a sliding waterfront setback, and contacted them to ask how it worked out. They didn't end up implementing it, but for reasons that had nothing to do with the sliding and everything to do with the waterway. They didn't have jurisdiction over that, over that setback in all cases, it turned out, like, the Gulf of Mexico, the feds have something to say about that, and they're not too concerned about what Longboat Key thinks about it, so. They didn't end up implementing it for those reasons, and I didn't think that those were particularly applicable here, so, but I did include it. I was asked what the provisions are in Green Oak Township, and they have one minimum side setback at seven feet, so they've decided, go ahead, build right up to, you know, the lot line, well, pretty close up to the lot line, going with prevailing conditions that pretty well matches what, what is already built there. The reason that I didn't recommend that is because that really, if you, with a lot combination, that can really increase the scale of the building with no relationship to the scale of the parcel, and that, that's my advice on that. Minimizing street-side setbacks could go a long way. I agreed with that, and I sat down with our senior civil engineer, and I asked him if, so when he designs roadways, does he ever think about setbacks? Is it ever, does this ever even come up in engineering conversations, because you would think, since it's not in planning, we, we don't commonly associate our setbacks with the street, that that's where it would come up, and he said, no. We take care of that when we are designing the road right-of-way, so the design speed and the design characteristics of the road are accommodated in the enormous, say, sixty-six foot wide right-of-way. So, we can, in theory, take our front setbacks all the way down to zero. I don't know if we would want to do that all over, but it seemed like that's the best place, if we're, if what we want to do is permit expansion, that seems like the best place to do it. We can't grow to the side, we've already, we're already pushing up against our neighbors here. We don't want to go to the back, because that impacts water quality, that leaves the front, and it looks like that's a safe place to do it. We do think that minimum lot size is an issue, and I agree. We looked at it, but it's not one that goes before the ZBA, and the Planning Commission can actually do very little to, to, to change that non-conformity, rather than, other than just make your lot size equal to the smallest one that you have, and then they'll all conform. That's not a good idea, because then you're setting the rules for the rest of them to be like, you know, a two thousand square foot lot, and that is not, that's not what you want to do. So, if you want to reduce that non-conformity, this isn't the study that will do it, I don't think. Different zones for different areas of the lake. So, those three previous recommendations, I think, are good practice on all the lakes, on all lakefront properties. So once we did that, and then said, okay, now what do the non-conformities look like after we have relaxed it in the places that are good for everybody, we did find a couple of patterns. Wildwood Lake had very few non-conformities, and they were really just side setback issues in one little strip of properties, which, because GIS can be a few feet off, may not even actually be out of conformity, and so it was small, and I would not bet the bank on it. I think that Wildwood Lake is, is well-served by the three recommendations we've already made. Whitmore Lake still had a variety of non-conformities, but not in any spatial pattern. Some lots are teeny-tiny and are going to be out of conformity no matter what. Some do not perfectly match the zoning ordinance, because their lot line is in the middle of the lake. I mean, there's just, there are a lot of things, different, specific issues. So I think that taking the general practices we recommend will get us part of the way there, and the rest of them will probably just have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. Horseshoe Lake, however, had a huge percent, well, large, not huge, a little less than, a little more than a third, I think. Large percentage of properties that couldn't even meet the ten-foot street-side setbacks, so once we set it at that, we still had a third of them out of conformity, out of conformance. Well, that's surrounded by these very low-volume, low-speed roads, which can probably handle a zero setback, especially considering a number of the structures are already built that way and are already being accommodated. So around Horseshoe Lake, I would say, I think it's okay to just remove that front setback, if what we're trying to do is, you know, allow some, allow homeowners some flexibility. And somebody had mentioned not changing the lakeside setbacks, but discussing placement of lakeside structures. I was really pleased to see that very few parcels presently don't conform to the current twenty-foot setback. And in fact, even if we increased it to a twenty-five-foot setback, which is consistent with our natural features ordinance that recommends a twenty-five-foot setback from all water bodies, even if we did that, we only pushed four more properties into non-conformities. So that is a total of twenty-five out of the entire township, if we make that ordinance consistent. So I, I think that was a good bargain. The actual recommendations are two overlay districts. One with the, one for the Whitmore and Wildwood Lakes, that will consist of all parcels of budding Whitmore and Wildwood Lakes, with street-side front yards of not less than ten feet, side yards not less than ten feet, except in the case where the lot does not meet the requirements for minimum lot width. The side yard least width shall not be less than twelve percent of the lot width, and the sum of the two side yards shall not be thirty percent of the lot width. And waterfront rear yard shall be not less than twenty-five feet. And I will say, oh, I kind of skipped over this, when I was talking about the waterfront setback, I would recommend on these properties, changing that term, not to a rear side, but to a waterfront setback, and putting it right in the zoning ordinance, that we strongly discourage zoning board overrides or modifications to this, or, or relaxing, relaxing this particular ordinance. And I feel okay saying that in conjunction with relaxing the street side, so we're not saying you can't build, we're saying push it toward the road where it's better for the lake, the health of the lake that we all share. So, that is the Whitmore and Wildwood Lakes overlay district, and then a Horseshoe Lake overlay district, consisting of all parcels of budding Horseshoe Lake, that has no minimum setback on the street-side yard, and then the side and waterfront rear yard requirements are the same. I included a bunch of tables for you, but I think that the most important lines are the last, last two here, where we can see that we have taken the lakefront parcels from fifteen percent non-conformity to six percent non-conformity, so that's at least a considerable reduction in the number of properties that are eligible to go in front of that. So a hundred and forty, forty-two properties total would have had to go before the ZBA previously that would not now.
Do we have any, any questions of Ms. DuMichele about these recommendations? Go ahead, Mr. Roman.
In, in all the, in all the details, did you come up with an average lot width on any one of the three lakes?
An average lot width?
Yes. In, in other words, are we mostly, is, a certain lake may have fifty-foot lots, some may have sixty, some have larger. I guess my question really leads to, maybe Mr. Dignan could answer, but, how, how big of a problem is this on the ZBA in the past two years? I mean, is there, is there just like a glut of people wanting to expand their lakeside homes? I mean, when I was on the ZBA, I don't think it occurred very much, but like, what is the main?
Well, which specific?
I'm saying, in general, what is the main driving?
It's half the ZBA cases that we've seen this past-
Expanding, expanding non-conformities on the lakes?
Yeah, because they're all legal non-conforming lots of record that we've seen. I mean, they, you know, and unfortunately, we've had, and I understand that ZBA doesn't see a lot of cases to begin with. I mean, you know, we, we might have five, six meetings a year, so five or six cases a year, but over the last couple of years, fifty percent of those cases have been due to this. I know that Ms. DuMichele did poll ZBA cases. We talked a little bit about which specific, some specific cases. You know, it, it's, you know, you got these folks that are reinvesting in, in our community and working on their homes, and they have to come before us for these things that consistently are the same reasons why they're having to come before us. That's why the ZBA had asked that the planning commission look at this initially. I think it's interesting that, I mean, this, this may, I think the ZBA is intimidating to some folks, doesn't need to be, but, you know, it, it is, and this may lead to other folks doing some renovations that fit into a more uniform ability to work with them. That's, that's kind of what we were hoping for.
Right, you know, I understand, it's an additional cost, obviously, to, to anybody that wants to, to expand, you know, do whatever they want to do. I can understand that. But, but back to the question, like, so, so we didn't really come up with an average lot size on any particular, like, you were just looking at, well, you did obviously take data that there's a certain percentage of them that were not making the current setbacks, correct?
Yes, but I didn't take an average lot size, because I was only looking at the things that, that don't meet the requirements. So I did look at, say, for example, the average non-conformity, and that's how I, you know, and that's how I got to how many we would be removing if we decreased that side setback. So I didn't take an average of all the properties. I did look closely at the ones that don't conform.
Right. I had a comment regarding, on your first page, the building code doesn't say much about setbacks, which is, it's accurate. The, the building code doesn't address zoning issues, but what the building code does do in factoring allowable building area, those spaces, those empty spaces become part of a formula to figure out how big of a structure you can put on any certain size property. And, and ultimately, the, the main goal is, is fire safety, for the most part, but, but the space that's open around, surrounding a building does and can factor in into allowable building area, and, and that also factors in with the height and area limitations in the Michigan Building Code. There's, it's, there's a lot involved in the formula. Basically, you plug in all these factors, being the size of your lot, size of the building, size of the setbacks, all this, you come up with a magic number, and if it's below the magic number, it's okay, and if it's above, you have to make adjustments. In other words, not size-wise, it's not always a size-wise adjustment, but it would be like the type of building that it's made of, or a sprinkler system, or some other buildable type adjustment that you can make to, to adjust for that, so, but I just wanted to point that out. And, and in some cases, it could drive the building official crazy here, if he, if we were to reduce things, and, because you, you may skew those numbers that are non-conforming, because with what they want to do may not be current or up to date with the code, and they would have to make these other adjustments. In other words, changing from a wood frame structure- In other words, changing from a wood frame structure to a block or adding a sprinkler system. And those type of things could just skew the cost of what they want to do astronomically. There's also a factor that if my neighbor's house catches fire and mine catches fire, you know, there's, something legally is going to happen with the township. But, kind of making a long story short, but it could make it longer, I suppose. But anyways, I just wanted to point that out as far as what the building code says about the open area.
Ms. Chek?
Yeah, actually, Mr. Roman touched on, not a question, but a comment I had to make. My concern as well was regarding safety. The, the one stipulation in here that it can be a minimum of 10 feet unless there's accentuating circumstances in the calculation. My concern is if that allows that building to be three feet from the property line and the house next door is three feet from the property line. And you can see it along Main Street here, those houses are so close together. I even asked Chief Wagner, you know, what happens if a house catches on fire down there? He says, "It's a nightmare." They train to do that, but it's a nightmare. The possibility of the fire spreading is greater. That is my concern, that we're allowing them to be too close together with a formula that allows that. I think there should be a minimum side yard setback just for safety purposes. I mean, if a utility or emergency vehicle has to get down to the lake, you've got to have room for that vehicle to get through. In my neighborhood, that's what it is. And it totally, we have 15 yards, side yards, 15 feet side yard setback so that utility vehicles can get through.
Mr. Stan Alicho?
Yeah, but the difference ends up being is that your, your house and your subdivision was plotted out as a new subdivision. These are old and they, you know, some of them probably over 100 years old. So my question is, any of these changes that we're proposing making, if somebody's house does burn down on a piece of property, is this going to make it harder for them to actually put up a structure to replace that house by making some of these changes? Is it going to be more restrictive? Is it going to end up being something that would make it easier for them to actually rebuild?
The whole point of this exercise was to see how far we could comfortably relax the, the present zoning. So there should be nothing, and in fact, that was one of the things that tipped us off, that there was something wrong with the calculations, was that things were showing up in the second one as, as violating setbacks when they shouldn't have because everything should have been relaxed.
Mr. Dignan?
In response to Mr. Stan Alicho's question, I think what you have is, right now, if a structure goes down, they're pretty much guaranteed to come to the ZBA. I mean, they are. If it's a lakeside structure that comes down, whether it's more than 70% that they're taking down, it's going to come to the ZBA. I think with this, what's nice is there may be ways when an event happens like that, that they might not have to. But they still have that option. So if it is one of the Main Street properties that literally the lot is 25 feet wide and the house is 25 feet wide with eaves that hang over their neighbors, you know, they'd still have to come before the ZBA, but they'd have that avenue for relief if those circumstances existed. I think what's nice is this probably eliminates a, a great number of properties and it gives those folks on the lake that have some of those unique properties an avenue to improve if they choose to do so, which they may not have right now or maybe too many items they add to address today. So I, I mean, I think this is a great approach. I, I really appreciate Ms. DuMichele's work and Beckett and Rader's work. Thank you.
I have a question about the, the zero setback along Horseshoe Lake. The road commission doesn't tend to like anything in their, in their road right-ofways. So you, well, they don't, you know, so, right, so if you, so, so it's a private road, it wouldn't impact that at all. Could they, I mean, can they plant trees? Say it's a road right-ofway, I mean, can they plant trees in it? Can they, you know, what can they do in it? They can't do anything. Could they build a porch over the front of their house? Nothing. So it's like, okay. Can they park cars?
I mean, the road right-ofway doesn't belong to the property owner. It would be foolish for them to, for anyone to invest in improving property that doesn't, that belongs to.
So where would they park their car, park their cars? They could drive along the side or, I just wonder how they?
Yeah, sure. I'm probably, I'm thinking the most common thing that will happen will be the garage will open right onto the street and that's where they'll park the car. But, but we're not dictating that. We're, we're, you know, in a way, we're maybe increasing their design challenges by giving too many options, right? Oh, I can build right up to the street? Where am I going to park the car? The same place you were going to park the car when you had to, you know, when you had to leave room for it.
Sure.
But I, I think we're leaving, we're giving them more options.
So really, in the end, you've got 20 feet between houses. If you have the 10 yards setback on both, 20 feet is, you could get probably a fire truck through that, I suppose, if you had to. But that wouldn't be likely to need that. Do you, do you have any idea what our fire chief would say about that? You know, the setbacks? Oh, Janet?
I actually asked him that and he said the farther apart they are, the happier he is. And I can understand that.
Okay, well.
Don't forget you can put a fence up too, so that would take away that.
That's true, that's true.
I'm familiar with, even in like Pittsfield Township, City of Ann Arbor, minimum side yard setback, five feet.
Really?
Yeah, they have, they say minimum five, total of 15. So we can have five and 10, you can have seven and a half, seven and a half. If you look at it that way, you can have five on one side and five on the other side, as long as there's 15 total for, per lot.
Sure.
So if we're talking horseshoe, I mean, we're talking shoebox type, that's not the right term. Looking for shoe-horning these things into this thing.
Right.
Then, I mean, I, I would say 10 feet's kind of restrictive, to tell you the truth.
Well, these are good comments because you're used to building homes.
Yeah.
I was just in Toronto, okay, that was interesting because they had houses and they had three feet in between. I mean, they had a, a little gate and there they were, like about that far. It's, I swear, three feet apart and, which is somewhat concerning. But row houses are smack next to each other.
Yep.
But they're newer construction and the, you know, they make sure that they're okay for fire. So anyway, yeah, I guess we're not done talking about this, but those are very, very good comments.
Mr. Dignan?
There was a, a case on East Shore Drive that came before the ZBA in the past, it might be two years now. And they did improve in the right-ofway. Now, they didn't actually build a building structure in the right-ofway, but they did put a retention wall that allowed them to put flat parking on East Shore Drive where they had enough room to pull a car in. And, and you know, their back end's close to the road, close to the road. But, and the road commission didn't have an issue with it. They just had to understand that if the road commission had to do work along that route, that they weren't responsible for the work, or, you know, for what could happen. But we've seen that all along East Shore Drive, actually, with, with the improvements. That one just happened to come before us because, once again, it was almost a tear-down and rebuild on a restrictive lot. But, you know, and in Horseshoe Lake, I mean, if the association says you can do it, you can do it. Because the county has no rules there, the association owns the roads. You know, and so, I mean, that's, I, I think this is a great step forward. I certainly support it.
Okay. Well, what's your pleasure about this? Should we talk about it again at, with, I guess, our next planner? Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess my question is, Ms. DuMichele's done all the work on this. I'm really comfortable with the way it's done. I like the recommendations. I can see us scheduling it for a public hearing. I'm comfortable with that. I'd like to know what the rest of the board feels before I put a motion forward, but.
Mr. Roman?
I had a further detailed question, if you want.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Ms. DuMichele, on Green Oaks, the Green Oaks has seven-foot setbacks on their lakefront area. And that, but then you go on to say that that applies on all their, all their setbacks? Is that, is that correct?
Well, on all the lakefront, so they just only have one, what I was saying there is that they only have one setback. So we have two zoning districts that above the lakes, there's SR1 and SR2. And they have differing setback requirements right now. One is 10 feet and one is 15 feet. So my point was just that I was saying, if you have a property in Green Oak Township on the lake, it doesn't matter how big the property is, the setback is only seven feet. But that's just for the lakefront property. So if you had, my, so if you had a lot combination, for example, you know, you bought two, tore them both down, you would be able to build minus 14 feet of both lots, is all I was saying about that. Like, it's not dependent on lot size.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does everyone else feel comfortable with scheduling this for a public hearing with, with these recommendations? Can you write this up as some sort of an ordinance for us before?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. I guess we ought to see it again then.
I think we need to see it again then, in the ordinance format before we schedule a public hearing.
Correct. Okay. So any more comments on, on all of that? Mr. Roman?
Perhaps we could request comments from the building official? And the fire, and the fire department?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we should have that.
Real quick question.
Yes.
Where do, where do you get your percentage? Where does 12% come from and 30% come from?
So the 30% is the approximate, so right now, I'm going to get these numbers wrong, but I believe in SR1, the minimum lot size is 60 feet and the minimum setback is 15. So, and then in SR2, the minimum lot size is 50 feet and the setback, ugh, whatever it is, 30% was approximately what the percentage is now of minimum lot size, of setback divided by minimum lot size. So that's approximately what we're asking for as a minimum right now.
I've never, I've never seen setbacks set up as a percentage. It's always been a specific number of feet, period.
True story.
And your concern about combining lots, well, the reason you combine lots is so you can build a bigger house, right? I mean, if you're going to say, I got two lots combined, I want to build a bigger house, but now I have, now I can only do, have to leave more of a side yard setback because now I've got more total frontage. You're taking away the ability to build, I mean, what's the point? I don't get that. I mean, you're, you're, you're making them create more open space than, than the guy next to them just because he has a bigger lot.
No, I think in that, in that case, the larger setback is going to apply because that is going to meet the minimum lot size. So the way that I have it proposed, and I did want to think it all the way through and make sure, you know, I understand that the reason that you buy, that you combine lots is to buy, to build a bigger house. What I'm saying is that I don't know that that house has to go all the way within five feet of the fences. You can still build a pretty big house on two lots if you're keeping it, you know, 15 feet on either side. And no matter, the idea is that you're just retaining 30% of, of the open space on the side. There is some confusion there. I totally agree now that you're pointing it out. When you combine a lot size, when you combine a lot, of course, it's going to meet the minimum lot size. And I'm only suggesting the sliding scale for properties that do not meet the minimum lot size.
Oh, so we need to specify that then or something?
Okay, let me shoot, because that's, not less than 10 feet, except in the case where the lot does not meet the requirements for minimum lot width. So that was definitely my intent.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Well, I, again, we're talking, we're talking tiny lots to begin with. Seriously, 10 feet, I'm building, on quarter acre lots, we're doing seven and a half foot setbacks. On half acre lots, we're doing seven and a half to eight foot setbacks. I mean, that's, and sometimes we're using them, sometimes we're not. But 10 feet on the lake seems kind of restrictive, quite honestly.
And it's perfectly valid. If you would just like to make the setback smaller at five or seven feet, that's perfectly valid.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out to, to the commission. I want them to understand that that's, this, that's, you know, you're, they're tiny lots to begin with. And if, I, I just think the 10 feet's going to limit, I know, I don't even, like you said, I don't know how much activity there is on this kind of thing anyway. But if you were to create a brand-new subdivision on the lake, you'd probably have five or 10 foot, five, like a, like a five and a 15 total as kind of your standard, as opposed to just saying, you know, 10-foot standard.
Well, maybe we should find out about what some other communities are using then. Like if Ann Arbor's using what you're saying, seven and a half.
In certain zonings, and this is.
Yeah, I say Ann Arbor doesn't have a lake.
They don't have a lake, right.
No, but they have, they have tighter zonings and, you know, it might be an R2 that I'm talking about. But again, an R2 still has a 15,000 square foot minimum lot size, which goes down to five feet minimum on the side yard setback.
Okay.
Mr. Stan Alicho?
That was my question earlier about if some of these things are going to make it more restrictive for people in certain cases. And in looking at this, Green Oaks already, I mean, they, they share part of the lake and they have a seven-foot setback on the sides. So I would think that since we're neighbors, maybe we should start looking at some, having some kind of consistency rather than having a totally separate, you know, mentality of how we want the lake to look. And maybe sitting down and discussing with our neighbor that shares the lake, you know, what their vision ends up being and trying to get some consistency. I just think it would make it look better.
Mr. Roman?
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back to what Mr. Kuzno was clarifying. So in other words, this is pertaining to existing non-conformities. If it was a new, new structure, brand-new, are they, they're not, they don't have this option? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, because if, if you're changing the zoning, if you're creating a new district, then it's going to apply to all of them on the lake.
Correct.
But I think that that's not, that's not unreasonable. Particularly, and, and we can do, you know, whatever you want with the side setbacks, pick a small number and stick with it, make it a sliding scale or try to push the houses apart and understand that some are going to be non-conforming. That's, that's a leadership decision for the commission to make. But I do think that changing the front and back setbacks is still a good idea.
Right. I, I don't either. But the sizes were, you know, I'm kind of torn because if we're reducing that, I guess in the past, we've, we spoke about a view of the lake and we were concerned about some of that and we're trying to make some adjustments in the things that we were doing. Well, now we're reducing all that and ultimately, you're reducing any access, you know, site, even site or access to the lake. It all depends what you want. I mean, Oakland County, their lakes, there's monstrous houses with not a lot of space. And that's what you see. I mean, it's the majority of their lakes. I thought we had a intent of kind of going the other way from that, but I mean, that's the downside on, on reducing this is that even in new, new, if someone were to purchase multiple lots and put something new, they're bound by this and they could make quite a footprint on a lot, so.
Well, this wouldn't affect our Whitmore Lake District, the waterfront district in the, in the downtown area. This would not, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we would still be, you know, the, the vision in the downtown is still to, to provide some sort of view of the lake.
I was speaking overall. I mean, I'm not sectioning out any certain, I mean, overall, I thought that's, you know, kind of the avenue we were kind of pursuing. But, you know, that can change.
Yeah, well, you know, there is some advantage to providing a view of the lake for the public to have an opportunity.
I'm just bringing up the fact that in reducing this, not only to accommodate non-conformities, new stuff is also going to take advantage of it, so.
True, true. Any other comments from anyone? Okay, well, we, we will revisit this again. Okay, we have an opportunity for call to the public now, if anyone would like to speak to us. Any takers for call to the public?
David Gordon, Helena Road. Couple of things. Number one, I know when I was serving on the planning commission and especially on the board of trustees, there were a number of people, including a few folks that are sitting on this planning commission who used to go pretty ballistic when items were added to the agenda at the meeting. So I made a distinct effort to try to avoid that because I understand that when items are added, especially- especially when you're talking about things like the bylaws or zoning or, uh, it's disrespectful to the public who's out there looking at the, uh, the agendas and that sort of thing that's online. You, you, you don't show up because something's not, not even on the agenda, next thing, you know it gets added to the agenda. Um, so I think it'd be helpful if we would some, somewhat curtail that act, activity of changing the agenda at the meeting. Number two, um, I think it's, uh, and I've said this before, this may be the fifth meeting that's been spent with a considerable amount of time on bylaws, uh, thousands and thousands of dollars on an item that, uh, the board didn't identify as important and this planning commission never identified as important. Uh, I think it's a waste of taxpayer dollars. Um, number three, uh, I camped to this microphone after I spoke the first time to the public and I was unaware that the, that it'd already been closed. I didn't hear that there was a motion to close the public meeting, or a call to the public. I apologize for that. I, uh, just wanted to add something, but, uh, there's a behavior that was demonstrated by a planning commissioner tonight that was incredibly rude, uh, yelling at me when all I did was come up to the microphone. This is the same person who's always talking about, uh, Robert's Rules of Order. And I believe that I, I direct my comments to the chair. And you rightly said that it had been closed and I was out of order in what I said, and then I sat down. But the rudeness that's displayed by certain people here is one of the reasons why we have a hard time getting people involved in this community. If somebody disagrees with them and then they start yelling at them, it, that was out of order. Especially for a person who's always talking about following protocol. Lastly, I'd like to, uh, apologize for the treatment that Ms. De Michele has received in this community from various members of this planning commission and the township manager. Uh, it doesn't surprise me that she's leaving. It's a black eye for this community that we've had two professional planners left, leaving the community. We've now had two highly respected planning firms in Washtenaw County saying, no, thank you. We'd rather not work for you guys. And we're now having to reach outside of the county to McKenna to bring somebody else in who's not operating day to day in Washtenaw County, who's going to become our new, our new, uh, planner. I certainly hope that the treatment that they get is better than what was given to Ms. De Michele. Um, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, comments from the commissioners. Let's start, uh, down at that end. Mr. Roman, any comments?
Uh, thank you. Um, in reflecting back on what, um, some things were said or, or assumed in this, uh, this meeting tonight, um, I don't think it, I don't think it's, uh, a, a major malfunction to make, uh, amendments to a proposed, um, document that's going for public hearing. Actually, it's the opposite. That's why you're taking it to a public hearing, to gain public's input. And if you have to make adjustments, you can make adjustments, so. I don't think any certain documents cut and dried until it actually goes through the whole process and is, uh, has gone through not only our commission but the Board of Trustees, so. Um, you know, I, I heard some comments about, well, check with the attorney, check with, well, that, that costs money, you know? Um, and I feel that even if, at the time of the public hearing on a, on a matter, is like, we're, we're going to provide the latest and greatest update of whatever we're putting out. I think it would be also beneficial if we were to had gotten, um, the language for the, uh, um, for the bylaws prior, maybe a little bit sooner before it was even sent for, to be, you know, a notice for the public. Um, because those things could have been corrected. This kind of happened simultaneously, but maybe in the future, we could have, uh, the document distributed and possibly we can look at, uh, the small minor things that we did have to change tonight before it is even put out to the public, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Anything, Mr. Kuzna? Okay, Mr. Iaquinto?
Uh, yes. There have been multiple statements made by members of the public when they've come up to the call of public about the treatment of Ms. De Michele. Uh, as one planning commissioner, I have not seen that disrespect and the rudeness that has been referred to, uh, to Ms. De Michele. Uh, I have treated her with respect. I've seen many commi-, all the commissioners treat her with respect, including our township manager, so I would just like to address that. Thank you.
Mr. Stanlecho?
You know, uh, the member of our public that made comments about how much time we've been spending on our bylaws, um, I, I have a tendency to agree with them in some respects that this has taken way too long to get to a point like this. Especially considering the fact that we have a set of bylaws, that we have a tendency to generally ignore and not follow. Um, an example would end up being is the voting or deciding to postpone the vote for our, um, new officers. That's in our, strictly in our bylaws, but we decided as a planning commission to ignore that portion of it, which I find a little disconcerting, the fact that we made a motion at our, the last meeting that we had about emailing the packets to, uh, the commissioners, and yet, somebody ended up having an issue with that and saying that that was not right for us to supersede that, our bylaws. So I don't understand how on one side, uh, saying that we, as a planning commission, decided to supersede our bylaws or change it, and now we're being told that that wasn't right, and yet we're doing the same thing on the other hand, it doesn't seem right to me. If we're going to have a set of bylaws, let's follow them. It's not just piecemeal, decide what we're going to follow and what we're not going to follow. Otherwise, Mr. Gordon's right. It's not only a waste of time, it's a waste of money. So in the future, I would suggest that if our bylaws say something or state something, let's follow them. Otherwise, what's the point? It makes us all look unprofessional. And as a last thing, I'd like to make sure that we keep our men and women in uniform and our thoughts and prayers, their sacrifices, are what's allowing us to have this freedom of expression. Thank you.
Ms. Chick?
Um, just a couple of things. Um, I actually wanted to ask you a question. Is it not, is it inappropriate to add things to an agenda? I mean, it happens all the time. Is, is it, is there something that says we can't do it?
Nope.
I didn't think so. Okay.
I know they do it at the Board of Trustees. It, it's, to me, it's a question of being prepared. And if you don't have the document, documents in front of you, how can you be, be prepared to discuss something if it's added at the last minute and we haven't, you know, unless it's just a, you know, um, policy review or something, something like that. But if we're, if we're actually discussing meaty issues, you know, where it's closing in on a, a decision, then I really think we ought to have, all have the documents, uh, ahead of time and the, um, the public should be able to see them also. So, um, you know, I, I'm uncomfortable with adding things at the last minute. If it's not on the agenda, I really hate to see it added, uh, honestly, but, um, but we did add the, add that discussion about living water, but that, you know, we're not approaching a decision on that. That was just probably better under policy review and discussion at this point. But, um, it was okay where it was, you know, I, I hate to put them off. So, Mr. Dignan, do you have a comment? Oh, another, another comment from Ms. Chick.
Okay, I, um, nothing to do with anything we've talked about tonight, but it occurred to me, um, I would like to see, how would I view a copy of the Washtenaw County Master Plan for Northville Township? Do they have it online?
They should. Um, it should be available. Ms. De Michele would know.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what they see as a vision for our townships.
Are you asking about a county master plan? Is that the question?
Yeah.
To my knowledge, there has not been much countywide planning done because I feel like I have looked for a Washtenaw County master plan and there's a pretty bare bones document that I feel like is not that current, but I will dig it up and send it to you.
Oh, that would be awesome.
There, there was one that was developed when I was a commissioner. I mean, we actually had a planning department. And they would do some really nice work, uh, for the whole county. I think they tended to pull in the master plans from the different municipalities though, as they were kind of evaluating everything. But that, that was disbanded a long, long time ago, so.
Right. Right, although, but I know the county still does some planning, so I'll find out what the state of that is.
Sure, that would be great.
And I do want to thank you for all of the time that you've given us. Your, your work has been impeccable and you can tell that it's very well researched and, um, presented, so I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Mr. Dignan?
Uh, two things. Um, one, I just wanted to come back to, uh, early in the agenda after call to the public, when a member of the public did step up. Uh, I said, Madam Chair, I'd like to raise a point of order. I said it loudly, that a gentleman from the public is out of order. Then I repeated that the gentleman from the public is out of order and as I tried it, and as I was being shouted down by that individual, I said it again. I will do that absolutely. It's my obligation to do it as a commissioner. Uh, you know, control of the meetings is critical. And I was not trying to undermine your authority as chair. Um, it happened very quickly. It was very loud. You may not have heard me state that, Madam Chair, the individual's out of order. But we cannot tolerate that. There's a long history of that individual, uh, disrupting our meetings. Uh, we saw it throughout the earlier part of the meeting until I brought it to your attention today. Um, and it cannot be tolerated. Uh, I, I welcome all the public, every single person from the public to come here. Please speak to us. You have an opportunity on the agenda. We'd love to hear from you. But allow us to do our jobs and to get our business taken care of as well during, during that period of time. The other item I'd like to talk about is, um, Article 12 of our current bylaws, which is parliamentary practices in regards to what governs us as a board. And what governs us as a board is Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure. And I want to refer to, you may not have this before you, Article 4, Section 21 of Robert's Rules of Order. Section 21 is Questions of Order and Appeal. And when I mentioned to you that I felt that we were violating our bylaws, Robert's Rules of Order is very clear. We were violating our bylaws. We don't have the authority to do so. If we did, none of the rules in our bylaws would matter. We could throw them all out. If we are allowed to do that, we therefore could have stepped aside from the whole process of informing the public of our change to our bylaws and could have adopted them. But it was made very clear at this board that that's not allowed. You cannot do that. By the rules we adopted to govern us as a board, it's very clear that we cannot just set aside bylaws to do what we wish to do. And that is what happened tonight at this board. This board voted to step outside of their purvey and do something that is not only a violation of our bylaws, but is a violation of the guard, of the governing policy documents that we've chosen to govern ourselves by. I'm very disappointed that we did that. I don't think it's appropriate. I believe that doing that, there were some people that were pretty hell bent on making sure that happened. And, uh, you know, that's, that's a shame. That's a darn shame because, um, I really question then, how do we operate and govern? Why are we going through this bylaws document in the first place if we just set it aside whenever we don't feel like it's going to meet the needs of what we want to do? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate you, um, braving it, the, the cold and then suffering through the heat, um, here. So, um, you all take care and have a, a good week and we'll see you in two weeks. The, uh, next regular meeting is February 3rd. We will have a public hearing on the bylaws in the RTM District. I really don't know of anything else, um, that we are dealing with, but I'll discuss that with Ms. De Michele. Uh, that would, um, potentially be her last meeting with us and, um, and I'll find out what's happening with McKenna also. So, thank you all. And, and, Ms. De Michele, I have to ditto what, uh, Ms. Chick said. Uh, we've had many good meetings and you do do excellent work and it's very thorough, very thorough, I have to say. So, um, thank you very much. I've appreciated the time working with you. Okay, good.
Motion adjourned.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Iaquinto, support by Mr. Stanlecho. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.